Right. Hello, everyone. I is seven oh one on Tuesday, January sixteenth. Uh, we are going to call this virtual meeting of the board center work sessions be the border. Um. Laura Coogan, would you go ahead and do roll call for us?
Will do. President Franklin.
Here.
Commissioner Brooks.
Here.
Commissioner Colbert.
Here.
Commissioner Lot.
Commissioner Lot will be back in about three minutes, so we're just gonna get through the administrative stuff while we wait for her.
Commissioner Purvott.
Here.
Public Works Director Darnell Bond. Police Chief David Burse.
Here.
Town Clerk John Hootson here.
All right, thank you. We'll all rise with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the law.
And we'll move on to review of the agenda.
Will do. We have. A calendar items. Board of Commissioners goal setting for discussion. Town holiday calendar and town meeting schedule for discussion. Budget calendar for discussion. Annual events calendar for discussion. B Trinity Church Shared Use Agreement for discussion. C Property Standards for discussion. D Preliminary Charter Review Changes for discussion. Six Administrative Updates. Seven Preliminary Approval of Next Meeting Agenda. And eight Adjournment.
That one, okay.
Yes.
Okay. Then. Well, first, I just wanna, you know. Say thank you, everyone, for your patience with the weather and all of these shifts in this meeting. Uh, it looks like we're actually getting a stormy wind this year. Um. We're gonna move into the business items. Um, and we will, it's not on the agenda, but as we have public here, we've made public comment. Um, after the administrative updates. And before the preliminary approval of the next meeting agendas. Comments, um, that's when we'll give you a chance. Um, we're gonna get started with calendar item. And basically several calendars that, um, the town is working on and just to make things. Easier to make sense of, we made this one agenda item, so we can have sort of. Discussions going back and forth between the different calendar item. But I'm gonna let our town clerk kind of guide us. Through this in your because you're here, this calendar is like just had everything on it. Code it, so everyone who had like month by month into look at, because that's how my ring. And then we have the lists. On pages three, four. And since. Taken away, John.
Okay, so the first thing we wanted to bring up is goal setting. Um, every year, the Board of Commissioners usually sets forth their priorities for fiscal year. Of course, this is going into fiscal year twenty twenty five. And. So we get the Board of Commissioners to bring one or two goals that they would like to focus on for this fiscal year. Um, we've done this every year. Um, and we're hoping that possibly you all would, um, be available on Saturday, January the twenty seventh at ten AM. Right before we do the volunteer appreciation event, as well as the, um, training for the volunteers. We were hoping you all could come together and do some goal setting, um, as the board. So that, uh, you guys could set forth your priorities. So that is something that we're, we're hoping to do.
That is not this Saturday, but next Saturday, question, can we come at? We said like either ten or.
We were thinking ten o'clock, no, it'll be ten o'clock for the, uh, board. We would start volunteer training at eleven thirty. And at one o'clock would then be the volunteer appreciation luncheon and ceremony.
So what we can do is basically ten o'clock, maybe can be public would be allowed to come and watch us. But it would be, it would be sort of a special meeting where actually just. Having a conversation about what your goals are. Um, you know, what things are important for everyone to get done, so that as we go into budgeting. Sort of in agreement at the direction of making that to me. My staff. And all of that. So it's kind of more open, it's not really work sessions.
Well, can we discuss some of that? Treat.
Okay.
Um, I'm actually putting together the retreat. I think.
Um. So. I don't know, because that's not, it's on the agenda. On the agenda as a calendar item, so we probably really can't have that discussion now. John, can we or can't we? That's a question.
No, because it's really not on the agenda. This is just asking you all for discussion about setting forth a budget, uh, goal-setting session. That would be help, of course.
And for those that are, you know, what exactly are we? You're like goal setting, like. Something you let them do. So like, if one of my goals is like, let's facilitate opening a new restaurant.
Okay. Right, so when, if the goal is have more businesses downtown, that's what that is, then when we're doing the budget. We're trying to have things, it's a Friday, we need to find Sunday. That's, that's how we.
That, okay.
But then we also, some of like, some of you guys have been, especially newer commissioners, have asked me questions like. How does the website get done? It's, you know, what is staff doing here, what is staff doing there? And that is a little bit of, is a different level of goal setting, but like. What goals am I setting for staff and how am I prioritizing the kind of. Have to be done. And then there's other tasks. That we do because. There's kind of in the direction we're trying to go. Hey, and so those are the tasks that we're helping them prioritize. And having that feedback from you guys. Continuation. That we're calling. That I'm representing all of us. When I have to meet that. So can we maybe find this? Yeah, while we're here, you're doing Friday, Saturday, and Sunday retreats?
Yeah, so we're moving. The holidays Africa and put together.
See, well, let's see. What, do people, are weekends better or evenings better? Let's start there. Do I have a dinner or anything?
Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Thursday.
Well, can we, one, because it suggests new addition, can we email? Would it be done?
We can.
To do as the chances.
How about we email them?
Yeah, so, because. Uh, what I, I can set up. Yeah. But what's it seems? But. No, I get the, this is very.
Um.
You know, follow there. Doodle. So. I can set that up. The only thing is we want to probably have spent of the macro holes before we get into. The budget, so before Tu- Tuesday, February thirteenth, when we're making about. For priority budget discussion, that's when we kind of come out in this. Work session and say, oh boy. Here's the priorities we've got, this is more minutes, yeah, sitting around the table brainstorming.
So can we do this weekend possibly?
John, would notice and timelines work for this weekend if we are all able to?
I, I, I can't.
Maybe, maybe better.
Well, if you, if you will. Over the next few weeks. Sometimes we give our available. But we, but we still have to show up on the twenty seventh.
So. The twenty seventh is a volunteer appreciation event. So, and that's the appreciation ceremony starts at, well, thirty, right, John?
The appreciation lunch starts at one o'clock, the training starts at eleven thirty. And the idea is, is that, of course, you all are liaisons to a lot of the committees. So the hope is that you all would join us for the training. So that you understand what all the committees are going to be trained with as well.
That is useful.
That's a hope.
That can start at eleven thirty, so the training for committees starts at eleven thirty. The appreciation lunch starts at one, um, if you wanna, you know, I'm them, and your. That like, it's just nice for all of us to appreciate them, because they do that. Um. So we can do that. But you don't, you don't have to be there, it's nice that they feel appreciated. Um. Okay, so let's even more out the goal setting, if you guys prefer to do goal setting, you know, we can, it just doesn't allow much kind of discussion. And. It's really you all have to stand here, so that you can collect them and send them back. Conversation and bring me down. So.
That's the thing, where is it? Or turn to the auditorium, be, not as we be after. February third, that, that, that works.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I don't check.
But no. Of course, he's gonna say. Next. So February third, it could be the goal setting thing.
Okay.
Um. What time?
Ten AM, it could be, not too early.
Ten AM is good. So the goal setting meeting will be, um, Saturday, February third at ten AM.
Perfect.
And we'll advertise that.
Exactly, that's.
All right. Thank you.
Moving along to the next calendar. So we also propose to you all the town holiday calendar. So, of course, as we all know, Monday, January first was New Year's Day, January fifteenth was Dr. Martin Luther King Junior's birthday. Um, February nineteenth is President's Day, May twenty seventh is Memorial Day, June nineteenth is Juneteenth. June, July fourth, Independence Day, September second, Labor Day, October fourteenth, Indigenous Peoples' Day. November eleventh, Veterans' Day, November twenty eighth is Thanksgiving Day. November twenty ninth is Day After Thanksgiving, and December twenty fifth is Christmas Day. So that is the proposed holiday schedule for the town.
Um.
And it's in line with county, just to make everyone aware.
It's in line with what?
The county.
The county.
So we usually carry you off at the same time, says the county. Um. The other thing I was gonna kind of propose to everyone. Is Christmas. Week, like the week between Christmas and New Year. Um. And, um. Chief and, and Darnell, if you've joined us, um, you can chime in here, but I know that Darnell have denied. The leave request during Christmas. And it's just slow, um, and John, you can kind of chime in as well, like, there's not a lot of people that walk in, not a lot of phone calls. Um, and so an idea that I would like to propose is to have that, um, exactly. Um, be. Virtual, so someone, someone from general government has to answer phones every day other than Christmas Day. But we'd be closed to walking during that week, be able to just not come or come in. That lets staff take more vacation time in, if we're gonna find any space. And to make sure that some residents are still getting. The virtual, so. Helped on that.
And that's funny. He's after. Yep. Good time to be a family holiday.
And if it was a busy time, like if we were hopping, then that would be one thing, if they're really just sitting here.
I mean, I think. Keeping this. Someone be within reason is really important, if we can do it, let's do it.
Okay, so, um. Are there any concerns from that? Does that sound good?
It sounds good.
Okay. Obviously, it's a little different for. You know, the essentials will have to be here, but, okay. Any other holiday issues, concerns?
Um. I'm reading the, right, I'm reading on Christmas Eve.
Yeah, we gotta move on that.
Remove it.
That brings us to.
Hold on, let's make sure we're moving in a way, John. Oh, town holiday calendars, and now we're moving to the meeting schedule, hold on. Okay, no, we can move.
So the. This is the meeting schedule, and of course, we have two meetings that we have issue with. The one, Tuesday, June twenty fifth, is right in the middle of the MML Summer Conference. And of course, Tuesday, December twenty fourth is Christmas Eve. So. Those are the two meetings that conflict with our schedules. Everything.
Sorry. Oh, okay, exactly, right here.
Yeah.
Oh, good, thank you. Can we move it up to the eighteenth?
So we can do, uh, what we did this year, right? Is that we only have one meeting in June, and we only have one meeting in December. This only was higher. So we can either just. Give ourselves a breather and. Or we can add. So we're going to change the work sessions in June and December to be regular town days.
Okay.
And cancel the re- the regular, does that make sense, John?
Yes, that is, that's the recommendation, I believe, I think that's best.
And, but, uh, suggestion. So. The town hall is now. Holidays in twenty fifth. Who wants to come to work today at Christmas?
Right, um, we can give them more holidays than is on the holiday.
I've been saying, right, can we just do a skeleton staff, or let the, let it still be closed to the public to walk in and someone to answer their phones?
Yeah, so what, that's what we do that whole week, I think it's gonna make no sense to do it from the twenty, twenty third. Or the twenty seventh, they'll come back in a few years. Allow staff to work urgently, and. Like, pretty much, so there's, when government, general government is fully staffed, there's four staff members, which mean. One staff member can be responsible for answering the phone each day. So they could take off for. They could take vacation. Just one day, someone's gonna have to, and each person working after the phones, we'll work that out. Uh, so that someone's there to answer the phones.
Hey, with some love, with some names in the hat.
So we're moving the meeting, uh, from the twenty, so we're not gonna have it on the twenty fifth, we have it on the eighteen.
So we're actually gonna cancel. It's kind of like we're canceling the regular town meetings, then we're gonna turn the work sessions into regular town meetings. So that if we have to vote on something, we'll be. For June and December. Does that make you? And everyone's good with that? We're using the liberal leave phone coverage for the week of Christmas. Hmm. And one meeting for June and December. Okay. All right, so that's there, is there anything else on that calendar piece, John, that we haven't answered yet?
No, that was the only two conflicting meetings, and that has worked, been worked out, and that's what we needed to find out.
So now we'll go to the budget calendar.
Budget calendar. So the budget calendar, of course, we propose the budget calendar each year, it's, of course, approved by resolution. So if you're agreeable with these dates, we can go ahead, we will draft the resolution. And you will approve it at the, uh, January twenty third town meeting. Uh, we have Tuesday, January ninth, the boardwork session, preliminary budget calendar discussion, which is, of course, moved, was moved to tonight. Uh, Tuesday, January twenty third, we have the regular town meeting, will the budget calendar board approval of the resolution to approve it? Tuesday, February thirteenth, the boardwork session, the board budget priorities discussions, that's based upon your discussion that you'll have on February the third. Tuesday, February twentieth, extra board budget work session. That's the anticipated revenue and town tax rates discussion. Tuesday, March twelfth is the boardwork session, there'll be expenses, departmental and CIP discussion. Tuesday, March twenty sixth, at the regular town meeting, there'll be the public comment, proposed town tax rates. Schedule CYTR hearing, if applicable. And then Tuesday, April ninth, will be the boardwork session, the draft budget ordinance discussion and budget book. Tuesday, April twenty third, you'll have the regular town meeting where you'll introduce the budget ordinance and public comment period. Tuesday, May fourteenth, will be the boardwork session where we'll discuss budget ordinance and public comment. Tuesday, May twenty eighth, at the regular town meeting, the approval of the budget ordinance and budget book. And of course, July the first of twenty twenty four will be the fiscal year, twenty twenty five budget will be in effect.
Um, one question, what is the YC of CYTR hearing?
Um, it's a combined or a constant yield tax rate. So like if. If the assessments go up and the tax rate stays the same, and so more money's coming in, they change the tax rate, or we have that a hearing. Okay. Um. We can have, we can do a presentation on what that is, um, at one of these meetings.
What about CIE? I just wanna know. So I've never.
That's a capital. So that, like, are vehicles. Um, so John, and, and Commissioners. I was talking with, um. Alta, the CPA group. And they said they could actually have revenue and expense estimates to us for February twentieth, so we could be looking at them in sort of a combined way. Um. So do we wanna just, you know, have February twenty, and we're looking at revenue and expenses? And then. Um, move the tax rates. I mean, the tax rates will kind of get discussed in there, but move that all down to Tuesday, March sixth. So that, um. March twenty sixth, I'm sorry, I missed the two.
We'll say, yeah, another meeting.
Or we can, you know, so February twentieth and March twelfth, we can be talking about the whole budget instead of two separate pieces of the budget. Uh, and when they presented that to me, I was like, yes, it makes a lot, because we've been presented each piece, and then we have to. Together, and it felt like.
Yeah, if they can put it together for us.
Well. So the first, just, these guys know this, but the first thing I present is like, and completely unbalanced. Here's how much revenue it is, here's everything we want, and what it's all gonna cost, and it doesn't matter. Um, so that's why, if we can do that earlier, then we can have that discussion, figure out what we're gonna cut, and. You know, what changes we need to make. To make it balanced, because everything we want doesn't actually fit in.
Right. If you bring one to the budget.
Certainly. Well, Alta's actually gonna do the budget, so, so Alta puts the expense, they activate all the expenses, they have to make all. Karen and I, Karen and I, and so as they bring that back to me. You know, I'll send it to you, so you can say how the estimates would be, most of which we have. Yeah. Um. But, um. Yeah, they'll provide us, the, the, um, department heads will provide an estimated budget. Expenses to all of them.
Yeah, so. For the things that the department is. Yeah, are they getting proposals for those things, so that we can actually see what they cost? So we don't have so many estimates in the budget, we have actual, factual numbers.
Generally, and, um. Chief and I think. Um, if you wanna weigh in on how you estimate. Of items. When you do your, and budget request for the year.
Anybody can answer.
Um, I'll just say for us. Um, some of our expenses are sort of reoccurring. So we kind of have an idea. Of what it's gonna be. We just have to submit a different request for them to give us the actual numbers. Excuse me, so like for a computer, if the computer's three thousand dollars. You know, I generally know that's what it's gonna cost, so if I need a new computer for a tough, you know, a tough book or car or something like that, I have an idea what it costs, then I send it to the vendor. The vendor says, okay, well, now it's thirty three hundred dollars opposed to three thousand dollars, so. We kind of adjust, uh, pretty much like that.
So you basically add two to three percent. And five percent, or something like that, on top of it, as you know, it's a recurring charge.
Right, the chief is gonna add that percentage.
Yeah, that's just the thing, so, so when he makes the request, if he adds that, it's gonna give us a cushion.
But where did he take that, we consistently take that percentage back off and make the budget. So, um. So, yeah.
Well, the contingency is added, but then we don't have the money to add the contingency, so we. Contingency off. Well, the.
Inflation. I'm glad you said contingency, though, because our budget has never had a contingency.
But we talked about it. For doing, you know, stuff, so. And his supplies, when, um, the.
Right.
Correctly, I ask that we have a contingency, so he can have his repairs.
Yeah. We need just the contingency that isn't necessarily in each department, but is like one sort of amount. Right, well, but like, that's budgeted to spend if something happens. Um. Because we don't right now, and, and you guys can see, like, what all the spends are gonna be. We've done in the past. So yes, probably before we get to twenty, you know. Like, add. But.
Yeah.
I just make sure.
This, he's the middle one, I'm good.
Other questions that, yeah. It gets common.
Yeah, like, this would, contingency, it just means like. We have an idea of, for example, what we spent back here, plus a two percent contingency, that takes care of relation, that takes care of possible additional costs. That go with these specific expenses that we are already telling. So that's what I'm referring, and so we don't add a contingency when. Darnell, whoever says, this is what I think we'll spend based on last year's.
He does, before he sends it to us. Uh, I'm correct when I'm saying this, Chief and, and Darnell, that you add a percentage. Beyond. Your estimate of a cost. When you submit your initial request. When you submit your initial request. The budget.
Well, I mean.
Yeah, it just, it makes sense to add. Be into their specific expense. You know, uh, get a proposal so we have to know sometime then actually better.
Yeah, I know Darnell gets actually for things um. Like especially CIP is a lot of vehicles and stuff and they go. They both actually go get a quote. Okay, I'm just really curious.
So I don't know if, I don't know if it's just me, maybe John or Darnell. But it sounds like when you guys are talking, you're kinda fading out the the volume. So I saw Commissioner Colbert's arms moving, but I didn't hear anything that he said.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna deny everyone, Karen and I, um, so that you can hear us better. Can you hear us better now? Colbert say something.
I, John, did you hear him?
No.
Yeah, so I don't know what it is. Something is is causing you all to fade out.
So if everyone speaks one at a time, I think it would help because when.
We do, but I don't know how to hook that up and for a little. Yeah, John will look it up for our next meeting. Okay, he's got five inches of snow off her head.
So I'll just say I did not hear what the resolution was to the proposals versus, I didn't, I didn't hear any of that because I couldn't. Hear what you guys were saying.
We want you to do your proposal. For your expenses, like I think you usually do, because normally. You're estimating um cost increase. You're saying this is what it costs last year, plus I'm adding this much percentage because I know it's gonna cost next. Is that correct? Am I correct in how you do?
Yes, and and most of the areas you you kinda put in a little bit, um, but most times I go ahead and reach out to the vendor. Before budget season, just to see how much has gone up, you know, cuz sometimes they can tell us because. Our budget season starts in, you know, March, April, May. Their price increases generally happen in January, February, so we kinda already know. Ahead of time, you know, the budget season of how much something specific is gonna cost.
That's great, yeah, cuz then we have factual numbers. Uh, closer to what you are gonna need to spend.
Um, I think. Right, so what's gonna happen is they're gonna submit their budget requests. Um, and then what we're all gonna see is that their budget requests do not match our income. And then it is. Our job to. Figure out how we're gonna make them match. Technically. I, Karen and I are supposed to just bring you a budget that balances. But I like it to be more of a collaborative process because we all have different goals instead of me just. Throwing, you know, my goals that we're all having a discussion. About where we're gonna make those cuts and how we're gonna make those cuts so that no one's feeling like. Stuff got hot and they. So it is more work for us, but it's also. Better. We've kinda had a conversation about how we're doing the work, but also is this calendar timeline feeling okay? Do we? Do the new folks feel like they want additional meetings? Sometimes we've done every or not day.
I'm picking up what you're putting.
What? I said, I'm picking up what you're putting.
No.
Okay. All right, so this calendar is gonna be good, John. Um, we'll make that. Please to the twentieth and twelve. And then we'll be good. I'll send it to you. That they'll have expenses and revenue at the same time. The twentieth and the twelfth will have both revenue and expenses at the same time to really be like a balancing.
Exactly.
Tuesday, February twentieth and Tuesday, March twelve. They're both works that. Okay, so we're good there. But then there's another calendar, right, John?
We have the events. Calendar. So this is the proposed events calendar based upon the events that were done last year. So we have, of course, on January the twenty-seventh, we have the volunteer appreciation day at one o'clock. Um, in April, of course, there is the growing green with pride that's done with the county as well as the town. On Marlboro Day, of course, will be Saturday, May eleventh from ten to three. Uh, it's the Praydon Festival in downtown Upper Marlboro.
We always do that, um, I'm 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 just, yeah, we always do Marlboro Day on Mother's Day weekend. So and we all can't be here cuz my mom lives in the state.
I agree. So we, they used to do it Mother's Day weekend and then the events committee changed it. So it wasn't Marlboro Day weekend or Mother's Day weekend. And now somehow it's migrated back to Mother's Day weekend. And that's why we have trouble recruiting volunteers um and everything. So I think, yes, we should move it. Um, Mother's Day is the twelve. I put that on this. Sorry, I put it, I made this calendar, made this this conversation easier.
Yeah, so we really need to move everything. We never, I think we can always participate.
So the other factor um and uh. Staff and department heads can jump in to this discussion um has to do with the weather. And the rain dates and the fact that like it seems to rain a lot. Um, and so the question is. Does it make sense to leave it in May? Is May a particularly rainy month? Um. Or, you know, or, you know, should we move it back to the fourth and that's probably better? Should we move it to the eighteenth? Whatever it is, um, I know we've been have having struggles with vendors and rain. And our vendor price is extremely high for these type of events. So vendors are upset. When they're rain date, but they might not be able to attain, um, and they paid this higher price for it. Uh, so it's creating a struggle with that. Uh, any input? From staff or department heads on weather and dates?
Yeah, because it becomes an issue that we have to keep shifting everything. We create programs, we create things, and then, of course, the event doesn't happen on that date. And I think it becomes disappointing for people that the event has to keep being moved. So it does make sense to try to shift it, of course, away from Mother's Day. But also try to find a happy medium where, you know, weather wouldn't be a factor.
We never know about the weather. We can never.
Oh, we know that. Only the man upstairs knows that one.
Um, it's like a, I don't know if this committee.
Can we just put the Marlboro Day in that day?
Oh, yeah, I'll bet. Remember. Saturday, June fifteen. So.
It's my kid's birthday, but I think it would.
It's my.
What if your piss is the first?
Um, okay, so the only thing about June fifteen. Is that it backs up to, does it back up to MML and does that create a problem for anyone? It's a week before.
Is everybody going to MML?
Well, the sixteenth is Father's Day, so it's kinda the same thing.
Okay, so this is on May fourth, Chief. May fourth or May eighteen?
Um, I'm I'm fine with those dates. It's just, uh, you know, we just need to figure out what. What is the plan? Cuz if if we move it. Then, like John said, and we've seen in the past that some of the vendors don't come out and show up. And for me personally, for security purposes, it's very difficult to get people to come out. If we if we told them that it's Saturday and then we wait till three or four o'clock on Friday evening. To say, hey, we're doing it Saturday or the following week. It's kinda difficult because May, June is a lot of. Activities going on at other municipalities where they're having their events as well. So. Like I think our Marlboro Day backs up with maybe one or two other municipalities. So trying to change it still kinda. You know, bumps up with some other agencies' events, so. We just need to figure that out.
Well, I just think that having that one, you know, the weekend of Mother's Day makes it difficult because I think that prevents a lot of vendors from coming out. Cuz people wanna spend time with their family, take their parents out, whatever it is.
Yeah.
Um, so I think that we will get more help if we don't do it on that weekend.
What, what if? And this is kind of. A big change kind of to the event timeline, but what if we did it on Saturday, June eighth? And instead of having it start at ten. We started at like five o'clock. So it's it's the movie night day, right? So we start. The Marlboro Day later today, if you can have a parade in the afternoon, is that allowed? But like, then then we can have the event because the June movie night is always a problem. Does not get dark until super late and everyone's like, what are we doing while we're waiting for it to get dark? If we're having Marlboro Day and then we throw up a screen. Um, but as we, if we shift it to later, then staff isn't taking, you know, a eighteen-hour shift. Um, what are the thoughts on that?
That's, that'll work. That'll work because we always try to double up one of those days and have staff come out different days. No.
Um, Chief and Darnell, what are, do you have any staffing concerns with that plan?
I I like that idea. Um. My only concern with that is, uh, especially during Marlboro Day. We have quite a bit of uh things that need to be taken out of the roadway. So if we have something that draws um everyone sort of uh. Over towards the pond so that we can actually clear the roadway and clean up and. Anything that we need to do, that would be a big help. But as far as the timeframe and moving it later in the day, uh, so it's not so long of a day for staff, I think that works for me.
Darnell, you have such a good road clearing voice, though.
I may not have it tomorrow.
Oh, we should, we we were gonna move them over there just that John used last year's schedule. We didn't think about it and I didn't.
We did not lose the kids and it was like more secure.
Yeah, it felt more community-ish. Because it was nicer. It was a smaller space. People were a little closer together and all the kids were playing in the playground. It felt better. Yeah, that was just, we didn't think.
We can we just, can we just do the pond for that day and then the regular movie nights have it over there so that we can still. Keep, cuz since we're over there already.
Right.
And we can get the crowd to get on the um.
Yeah.
Get in the pond area. It gives them an opportunity to clean up and.
And then both the other two movies.
Cuz I was asking, can we, right, before this, I've been up so bad and. Yeah, I believe it too, but it just, it was. Like it was, it's not all. It's not paper.
Um. Okay, so. The plan is to move Marlboro Day to June eighth.
June eighth.
From May twelve.
That is the movie night. Got it.
And I feel like when we had this conversation about rain last year. Folks said you should move it to June cuz it rains less in June. I don't know if that was just. Yeah, that's scientific, but. So this is, I mean, that's the thing is if we do a rain day, we have this problem, right, which is we're paying for porta potties to stay over. So.
Yeah, I don't understand the rain dates. Usually events just keep going even if it's good rain.
Okay, and if it's downpour, then it's canceled and it's done.
Hmm, yeah.
Okay. Right. Everyone good with that? Alright.
There'll be the Memorial Day replaying on Monday, May the twenty-seventh at ten. We have, of course, Memories and Morsels, which is put on by the Town of Upper Marlboro Historical Committee. That's also pending the organizers of the event to see if they're going to do it on June the fifteenth at ten on Main Street. Um, we have movie night, July thirteenth, um, at eight o'clock. Um, August sixth, National Night Out at the Amish Market. Saturday, August tenth, we have movie night at the pond. Um, August.
We're moving the pond to here to, um.
Okay.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Um, sorry, on August ten, um. Is that's when we did the family cookout last year. Do we want to do the cookout? But what we did was like we had the family cookout. And average that's at just to the residence. And then the movie night pulled in after that and we have like a food truck come and that other people were allowed to come to the movie night. Did that work for everyone? Is everyone good with putting the family cookout on the tenth or is there another preferred?
I'm fine with it. I just, the only thing is I wanna keep it the same way just for our residents. So that way we're spending less money. And then open everything up like we did before to everyone else. I wasn't here for the family night, so I don't wanna comment, but I mean, it makes sense. You had a cookout for you.
Hmm, I remember it was August. I just. I just didn't wanna presume. I wanted to check.
No, it's not gonna do.
On the date, so that they've worked that. So we'll have the movie night and the family cookout, John, on August ten.
Perfect. That's wonderful. August twenty-fourth, um, proposed cruising on Main Street. Of course, that's pending the organizers if they're going to have it. Um, Chief can confirm National Faith in Blue. We have it down for August, October twelfth from nine to noon. Is that good, Chief?
I I need to uh verify that with the uh organizers, but that probably will be good. If not, that weekend, it may be the weekend before.
Okay, that sounds wonderful.
Okay.
We have, of course, Saturday, October twenty-sixth from six to eight, we have the Town Truck or Treat Event downtown Upper Marlboro.
So we had a time for discussion on that one again, too.
Yep, Farmer's Market.
Is this a question about a horse show?
Yes.
Okay, so. So the um. Washington International Horse Show will be here that week. I'm trying, I thought I put it somewhere on. This calendar. They will be, I think they come in on the twenty-fifth. So I I'm pretty sure when I checked that the um. Horse show was going to be going on during that week. And the problem with that. Um, is that's a lot of um people. Because if they find out that, if they found out that we're having this really cool event. Um, then we're gonna have a ton of people coming, which is, I mean, it's nice, right? Like it's good press for the town. Hey, the town has this this cool event. But it's also like we cannot. The people who attend in town cannot. Right, can't buy candy for all of those people that would be. Twenty-first through twenty-seventh. It's written from my face and I can find. So that and the twenty-sixth is a big day for the horse show. The kids are all over there. So that and the twenty-sixth is a big day for the horse show. The kids are all over there.
They have the petting zoo.
Exactly. And that evening, it's, is that, no, barnets, but it's a, it's a big day for the show. So the question is, I guess there's two options that the one is that we just quietly move it over from downtown here and, but, and that depends on the Boys and Girls Club's football schedule, right? Um, cause we could do it up here, then it's out of the way. But that doesn't mean that, you know, anyone watching or media isn't gonna see.
Let me ask, why can't we just do it all?
Right, just, just, uh.
I think, I, I mean, it just.
That's what we did before. Why do you do it?
Maybe in the Tuesday thirty-first.
December thirty-first.
It could be a safe environment for the kids, so, um, and it give the parents something to do with the children too.
Yeah.
I mean, we're always trying to find something to do for Halloween on Halloween day. And it seems like Maryland people don't celebrate Halloween door to door. So. It do. It just depends. Not here because it's not safe.
I would say Prince George's County. It's not.
Chief and Darnell, do you have staffing concerns if we move Truck or Treat to October thirty-first, which is a Thursday?
No, I was gonna.
That's why, why we. Could you hear that, Chief and Darnell?
Um, I, I don't foresee that being an issue.
How many of your staff members are gonna, are you, are you gonna have staff? I guess the question is really, is your staff going to be responsible for taking their kids trick or treating out and not be able to attend? That's a piece of the question. Will you be able to get staff coverage?
I'm sorry, my mind is just really not, not here at the moment. I didn't realize that that was actually Halloween. I'm sorry. Be a problem.
Cause you, half of your staff has children that they would need to take trick or treating and thinking. Um, bring them to work. Yeah, but you know how kids are. So I don't know. That's, that's the question is will we be able to have staff? But then could we also, do we need as many staff if we do it in the parking lot like we did last year? It was like across from Seven Eleven.
Remember the courthouse last year? That was so much fun. And then we went over there, not last year, I'm sorry, the courthouse the year before.
You mean on Main Street?
Yes.
So we didn't close Main Street because of concerns about safety, largely resulting from the, um, Valerio property that's just been sitting there and not doing any work. Um, like keeping up the previous year, but also, um, and Chief, maybe you can articulate this better, but like families were kind of crossing in the active intersection, even though they weren't supposed to be. Is that?
Right, so what we have a lot of times is that we have certain members who volunteer to escort people back and forth across the street. Well, when we're on Main Street, if it's, let's just say it's fifteen hundred, two thousand people. The majority of the people are gonna come towards or they're gonna exit out on the Lido side of Main Street versus the other side. So when you have several groups of people trying to cross the intersections, it makes it dangerous because what's happening is if you're coming down from the monument, you can either go, you can only go left or right. We're not allowing people to go straight. So people are turning on a red light while people are walking, because if we don't have enough search staff to keep the people on the sidewalk. In the past, several people have almost gotten hit. The Valerio property created a challenge because there's the side part of the sidewalk is missing. And so there's a hole there and I guess the way that they, hopefully they'll have it fixed by this, by this time this year, but we don't know. Um, you just have that concern with the fencing that if somebody leans up against the fence, they may fall in the hole again. So. Huh?
Really, you propose that we add it out of state for.
I mean, how we did it last year was the, was the best part. Cause we didn't have to shut down any roads. Everybody just stayed in one concentrated area and everybody pretty much right there by the seven eleven or they parked on the street and walked on the sidewalk and came down.
Oh, yeah, we probably wouldn't get permissioned.
And the other, the other, the other challenge sort of with having it on a, on the night of um, Halloween is that that's a weeknight where you're gonna probably have more traffic because people are coming from work. So you're gonna be, if we're doing it on Main Street, you're shutting down that major artery to trying to divert people around that. But if we have it in the parking lot again, it may not be as bad. But, you know, Saturdays are generally less crowded and people are more flexible and diverting versus people who are coming from work. And then if we're talking about shutting down roads on Main Street, which means we're gonna have to do it before the courthouse empties out. So you're gonna have that challenge because people are gonna still be in and around the courthouse probably until five, six, but we're gonna need to shut the roads down before that so that people are out of the, out of the way.
We can do it here.
Right. So this is the other option, um, is to do it up here at the school board parking lot as long as there's not a football game. Um, but if we did it on, yeah, we can, I can get the football scheduling. So.
It's actually not the football schedule. We need to check what Maryland Park and planning to see if somebody else has leased out the space as well because sometimes they have other events going on over there, especially during the summer. And, you know, so it's not just the football. It could be parking wrecks. They're the main ones who say yay or nay.
There's space for that one today. There's the one church next to the football field. I don't know about that relationship, but there's the, um, Catholic Church. It's also the Trinity Church. Parking lot, we're gonna discuss that. Like, we can't just tap on these community quarters and that number again. I don't know if how they feel about celebrating Halloween. Well, I know Trinity don't care, but for this one and the, and so I'm just saying, I don't. Yes, I'm not celebrating.
So how about, how about this? Um, let's kind of let, let's leave it. I know next week we're supposed to approve this. Let's, um, see if we can reach out to our partners and identify potential location to do it on Halloween. If it's in a contained parking lot, that will reduce the number of public work staff needed to close it, right, Darnell?
Can you say that last part one more time, please?
If we're in an enclosed parking lot, you don't need as many guys to close it, right?
We shouldn't. Um, I know the, we had one complaint last year that it was kind of congested. So if we could have the volunteers sort of park on the outskirts, like West Court Drive, um, I think that will help tremendously too. If we can spread out within the parking lot, so it's a little easier to manage.
All right, we're all gonna work on location. Yeah. I'm sorry. They won't even let me in. In there. So I don't think they're gonna let us. It would be fabulous. Well, why don't you, yeah, they, I mean, cause they, you have to go inside. Oh, no, you don't. Do the kids have to go inside?
No, they can be only make a big hoopla. It's a big chain company. No, love them.
That we would, and we would do tables instead. So that's Derek's gonna check with that, check that out. So let's all check locations, the churches, county, et cetera, and try to aim for the thirty-first and we can find multiple potential locations by next week, then we'll keep it on thirty-first and go from there. Is that selling plan?
Ooh.
Yeah. So everyone brainstormed an idea and then just checks their, if you brainstorm an idea for our parking lot, just or location, just check with whoever you know to reach out to and see if it's a possibility this week.
Also, there's, um, streets like Perrin Street where if residents park inside their driveway, trunk or treater volunteers could park on the road and the kids could just walk up and down that road.
Yes.
But then that would be better. You say that, that would be better. The cars parked right there.
You, you're talking about closing Governor Odin.
Ministry of Building over here. But here, no, this one right here, the school board.
I think we're back to, let's check location potentials and then see, well, you know, hopefully we can approve it without a question mark next week, but we have to prove it with a question mark that, so. No, that's a good idea. I just thought you meant the top balcony. Okay, so, all right, sorry, John. Um, so we're on, so the farmer's market has been tagging along with Truck or Treat. Um, I will say that the farmer's market has been being organized by resident by herself with.
With the farmer's market, but I, I wouldn't want it to trick or treat, to truck or treat. I want a separate day.
So the nice thing about it is if we put the farmer's market a little earlier and then you have the trunk or treaters come in, the, the.
It could be the same day, but not with this, not within the same event. Like how last year.
Right.
But we only had like two or three vendors out there.
Because she's trying to do it all. So the other thing. So, um, the other thing is that as those two events transitioned, the farmers started getting more people. So they actually asked me, could we be closer, could we be later in the day and closer to the trunk or treat? Because as people are coming treat them or something. Um, so they, yeah, they did request to be later closer to that because they got customers like that.
Yeah, the goal is to give.
So if we can pull that off on a Thursday and our locations work out and we have the volunteers, then put it on there. But I don't think you should put it unofficial calendar because it is such a, you, we have to have volunteers willing to participate to make it.
I don't know that the farmer's market is gonna do well in Thursday.
Right.
I'm just saying.
The only thing is that if it's, Thursday's not a jury day, is it? Or, oh, there, there's our jury. What days are jury days? So jury days are busier. So farmer's market might do okay during the week on the jury day. So let's, if Thursday is a jury day, then it's probably okay. I know Kyle was saying that. All right, so we'll look into all that and put a big question. Okay, Veterans Day, sorry.
That's okay. Veterans Day will be Monday, November eleventh at ten AM. We'll have the Veterans Day breakfast at Town Hall. And of course, on Saturday, December seventh, uh, from one to five, we'll do the tree lighting and Christmas Town Event in downtown Upper Marlboro.
We're gonna do a contingency date for this one, for rain day. But we just gonna not do any more rain dates because it costs a lot more money.
It's cost and you have to make the call, right? You have to make the call early enough to let people know. Vendors have a tendency to wanna know like three days out or the weather's even, sure. Um, and then half your vendors are mad you had it. And the other half are gonna be mad if you cancel it. Um, so it might be better to just continue with the rain or shine approach so that everyone knows ahead of time and it's not.
And it's their choice whether they wanna participate or not.
Knowing that.
And there's no money back.
Yeah, quick question. Uh, how do we advertise to the vendors? We have vendor lists and then we also post it on social media on the website. It goes out on our constant contact. Are there other places the vendor noticed with us?
A vendor fee. If I wanted to set up a table.
It's a hundred and twenty-five dollars. Which will, you get about weight being.
Why is it, why is it a hundred and twenty-five dollars?
Right. So most towns, I've checked with other towns, we used to do twenty-five dollars. Towns do either twenty-five, fifty or seventy-five is most I've heard. Because I told them that we have one twenty-five. We do still get vendors.
Yeah.
But I, and I, vendors have said to me, I'm not doing it. Vendors have said to Lisa, our events coordinator, um, and I looked I'm not participating. So I do think, and this is just we as a board can decide that we want to look at that. It's a resol, I think it's a resolution and re-change the fee.
Oh, the resolution to change the fee, but we just, the year before last, um, when I worked on it, we just waited the fee for just that particular day. And I collected whatever they wanted to give us that day. And we got, we got a lot of, a decent amount of money. We got about almost five hundred dollars.
Right, but why should we make the fee for one event and not for others? We should just set, I think we should just set the fee at a
A better price.
Nice that.
Why don't we leave the fee for vendors that are within.
Yeah, that's.
People who will appear and bring the table for free, obviously. And then anybody else like twenty-five, fifty bucks. A hundred and twenty is a lot. And if you don't make sales, you're setting up, you're getting your items ready. Like all of this is time, work for.
So before we go too far on this, because I'm supposed to keep up on the agenda item topic, right? Um, what I'm hearing is we wanna have a discussion about revisiting the vendor fees. Um, so John, can you make a note of that for the ruling agenda? Thank you.
Yeah, no worries.
So what we'll do is we'll have.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Okay, so the other thing, I have two other things on here. One is the community conversations, um, which won't go on its calendar, but basically once the weather is nice, um, I grab a table, uh, some materials, some snacks and water and I get set up like essentially on the street in our different neighborhoods. So I'll go over to Marlboro Town and set up in like a um, grassy area on the side of the street and just like wave to folks and talk to them. That gives us all a chance to have a conversation with them. Um, so what I did last year was I did them at ten on the second Saturday. Um, because if I wanted a staff member to come, they were already working on the second Saturday. Um, and then my family could also have me on other days. How does everyone feel about that? Does everyone?
Community conversation.
It's ten. Yeah, Marlboro Town is usually pretty successful. Um, Rectory Lane was fairly successful. I would say Spring Branch, we had like four or five people at Spring Branch too. You did Old Mill and Elm.
Yeah.
But you said no one came. Oh yeah, that you came to that one. We, those were kind of different. We do that during the week. Business conversation. Business conversation.
And they come during, I'm kind of, there's, just curious if, you know, they're like worth. The setup.
Right, so for me, it's just like, eh, I. I decided I wanted to do this and I didn't wanna put anyone else out in my doing it, but I was invited them all to come, but I made it like a. Basically, I can set up the shop by myself.
Well, yeah, I think it's important to, maybe not every single time, but like, we wanna look like.
Yeah.
Each other, you know?
Yeah.
So I think that's important.
Yeah, but so it's not a heavy lift, basically. I've made it a very simple setup, sets, and I honestly don't sit at the table that much. I go. Um, we're, keep based on people who are walking their dogs and chat with them, uh.
Vendor day with, vendor day, I'm talking to the people, and I talked to like. Then to do a flea market.
So come back to. It's. Someone has to be like a check-in person. Someone has to, you know, answer all these questions about, do, no, we're not providing tables, no, we're not providing tents. Someone has to be a point person on that day, there throughout the day. Um, sometimes people need help with stuff, so you, you need probably, I would say like ten committed volunteers to regularly be doing these. That's why the farmer's market really kinda struggled with Kathy because she was asking for help and people wanted to happen, but we didn't have the volunteers to make it happen. So the flea market is same kind of deal, definitely something we can do, but you gotta tell those people you need them to volunteer to make it happen.
Make, you're selling yourself, you're on or putting yourself together.
Yeah, but there's always like.
The Trinity Church, they charge twenty-five. To pay well. Two yards too.
They have like different.
I've seen it, I've seen it in the summer. Twenty-five dollars, you can bring, they bring anything. I go to Virginia too. I didn't see, I was just, I admit, I didn't see a whole bunch of staff. It was like one or two people, because you're, you are responsible for your own pricing and all that stuff. All they do is make sure that they're collecting the twenty-five dollars. And it's your, you know, you have a spot. That's all they're responsible for.
Yeah.
So we don't need a ten people with that. It's just. We don't need, because it's up to you, you're setting your own prices, you're doing all of the work. Only thing you need is somebody to collect the money.
Sarah, have you been at Eastern Market?
Yeah.
I'll take you. So there's no way that there's, I mean, I've, I feel like there are volunteers that Eastern Market.
It's not.
Members are setting their own stuff up, it is.
Yes.
I don't, it's the brightest one from it, it, it's, it's.
So. It's, it's this combination, like, first, it's getting volunteers who are gonna be there to help, so someone has to be doing that. It's all, it's a lot of email. It's not necessarily that they're all there.
Emailing, I got you, um.
So, so, no, no one's helping.
No, you don't, you don't, you need to do is be out there, like the money, get on the spot.
I think.
They can go ahead and pay for, oh, ahead of time, so they.
And they, they do, they do. We have that, but ye- yes, they pay, uh, all the payments come in through a vendor. That's just the best way for auditing or, or all of that, it's only over a vendor. Um, but. It's not just everyone shows up. There's a lot of this like planning work and where is this gonna go and Darnell winds up getting roped into a lot of that. Um, but I think that it might be a good idea to see if we can get someone from Bowie's Farmer's Market to come and talk to us about like. What is involved in having a regular farmer's market, uh, because everyone who runs a regular farmer's market has told me you can't do it without the consent of volunteers. Um, but then that's. But the flea market is, is.
Just selling your stuffs.
Right, but it's, it's a similar. I know it sounds like everyone just show up and put up your stuff, but it is more complicated.
Look, I do. About the number of vendors that we have. I think ten of them are established.
Right, yeah.
We need a good strong five, four, five people.
Yes.
To make a start.
But we have one, so that's. So. So it's not that we don't wanna do this stuff, it's just that have to kind of figure volunteer for, to. Be able to, to do this, so flea market, I'm gonna put at the bottom here. Um.
To be part of the farmer's, because the flea market, farmers market, yeah, there's just vendors though.
Yeah. But if it's like, if people wanna do an additional, that, like, I've heard people wanna do an additional day.
No, there's.
Yeah.
I don't think these people were doing. These people sell stuff. We can probably, people, I don't know Trinity Church did it.
Maybe like the community center did it too at one point, so. I think it's something to talk about, but I think probably it's not gonna wind up on this calendar or a lot of prove it as we get into the. Usually, the best thing to do with those is to tack them onto another event. Because as we see when we hit the budget, staff overtime is involved in any weekend events, costs money. Um. So we've got flea market, and the other thing I wanted to put on the radar, which isn't really on the events calendar either, is this idea of Christmas in April, we wanted to do it last year. It's a, like, happened, Christmas in April, which is like where, you know, residents who are, you know, you don't know.
Well, I did, um, not that, when I did it, I did Christmas in July. We started out planning, that's, that's how we started our plan, we did a Christmas in July, started planning from there, so when December came, we were ready.
Uh. No, Christmas, so do you want, with the credit union, how is it, you're laughing, is it hard to?
We'll make a bank or something, we'll make.
So, no, so it's Christmas in April is where you, um, usually like elderly folks, they need some project done around their home. Um, and so a team of volunteers and staff does stuff like plants flowers, mows the lawn, fixes a patio bed. Um, or flower bed, and, um, then he just kinda like helps spruce up one or two. Residents homes, um. So.
But what, what was that Christmas in April? We start out saving our money. I mean, that's for the great, we start the day with a, they show. I don't know too much about.
Oh.
Cause I remember back in the day. They open it in the account, just Christmas.
I think this is a good idea, but for, I'm about not having enough. Volunteers for.
Yeah.
You know, like a farmer's market, so how are we gonna get some more volunteers to go rest their butt on somebody else's property, you know?
Yeah, I just, so we have this, this part of this thing, which when we have these re- elderly residents who need, and then I'll have residents say to me. Amy, if someone needs their, you know, driveway shovel, just let me know, I'll go shovel the driveway. Well, we have this challenge of, like. You can't just send people to go shovel elderly people's driveways, cause then we take on some level of liability, um. And so, but we've got, I, I feel like there's gotta be a way to match up the people who wants to do something nice for other folks.
Yeah.
Cause if you wanna do it, you need to make sure, we just need to make sure they have insurance. Cause.
If you're just some, someone, your neighbor wants to go shovel someone else's driveway, well, the thing, the liability that we have is. Oh, we said this neighbor wants to shovel your driveway, and well, now if someone turns out to be one of these people who scams these elderly folks, then we gave them. You know, like, are we running background checks on everyone who wants to shovel someone's truck? So it, it becomes sort of.
Well, we can have some rules, if you wanna shovel, you can't go, you, that's the only thing to do, you ain't going to somebody's house, wanna do, which is shovel stuff.
Yeah, I, I'm hesitant to send anybody to anybody's, you know, especially like elderly.
I mean, you wanna.
It's shovel, really.
Okay, so I'm gonna cross that off.
I just like it, that's why.
Okay, all right, so that was the last thing I had on my. Um. The only other thing on my list is that, uh, sort of conservation has requested, asked if you wanna put up a table after. Which is at Darnell's.
Yeah, I'll be there, we can see lean giveaway.
So it's June first. Um.
So I'll do it, but they need to give me all the seedlings.
No, so they'll be giving away seedlings, we'll set up a town and, and we'll be giving away, um, literature, um, we could do the seed packets. Darnell's chance, yeah. We could do the seed packets from DPW again, Darnell. Um, but my question is, are we as commissioners willing to take on staffing that table? Um, if we're gonna have. Marlboro Day on the eighth, I don't wanna have to send.
Okay, I'm, but I'm first gonna get all my seedlings and then I'll come back to the table.
Well, I'll, yeah, I'll be able to go to that, okay. I think we're good with the count. It's not on.
It's not.
Or showdown. Any events that are on Showplace Arena that have been asking Marlboro's force to assist, or anything else that. Football games, boys and girls, you know, they get in and around town.
Uh, basketball, that was the. Showplace Arena, or Carnival or.
Oh, fair.
Is that happening?
Yeah, the fair is in September, the fair is, um.
It's really.
That's sad. It's, it's the. So, so, so being recorded, um, so the, so the county fair does not have the volunteers.
Those continuing staff.
To continue, it does not have the staff, it needs to like really up, um, they often request our participation, but it's like a.
Would you know what?
It's too much time, so we can't, um.
It's a comedy fair, why would Marlboro be in part of the volunteers? And we should, we should count into some children or at the county and make sure that those folks are making this county fair something to talk about and not that it be ashamed about.
Hello, so. So we have been trying to figure out what exactly goes on this, but I don't have any answers.
A bit, cause I used to work there, so, so part-time.
So it's like, it's not run by an agency. Um. So it's not run by an agency, it's run by like the fair board, um. And. So I think.
Yes, no, her.
Yeah, so we have a contact, one of our partners is, I don't think she's on the board, she usually volunteers. Questions about the fair, I'm gonna put you in touch with her to have a discussion. I don't really know the details, but I think we should discuss more later.
Yeah.
Um. So, yeah, so that'll happen in September, but we don't do anything with that. Chief, do we do any security? For events other than funerals around town without those events requesting permits first?
Say that part again, did we request, I didn't hear the whole thing.
Do we do coverage for any events around town? Other than funerals, where they don't request a permit from the Board of Commissioners first?
Uh, for the most part. When we have, uh, events or issues, like if there's a protest at the school board, if there's a protest at the courthouse. Um, if they have some type of gathering at the courthouse or the school board, a lot of times they ask us to be present. Um. And that has been something that's been pretty consistent over the last year, especially the school board, like they had a meeting last Thursday. So they send us an email asking, can we have, you know, officers, you know, just present in the area, because. You know, sometimes the school boards, uh, meetings can get a little problematic, even though they have staff on the inside. Just in case they need some assistance, we're kinda on the outside. The same thing with the courthouse, when like a couple of weeks ago, they had a protest over, um. One of the individuals who died in police custody, there was a gathering outside on Main Street. Um, and we've had other events there, you know, that it's actually the courthouse's responsibility, but sometimes the people are. On Main Street or outside of the courthouse property, so then it will be our responsibility. And then, like you said, the funerals are the only other things that have come up consistently.
And the sheriffs are good at partnering and helping us with stuff as well, yes.
Yes, they are.
Really, that one's not so much of. That's more of like a partnership assistance situation.
Right.
Okay, so yeah, so there are other events in, um. We can try to get schedules from these other folks, um, I don't know if they have them, but, um, we can definitely.
What, is it Showplace Arena?
Showplace Arena should have a schedule, but.
I can ask, um.
Yeah.
The, you know, the, when you put stats, stats, the events, so.
So boys and girls, Showplace.
I said, I'll check.
There's. Yeah.
We fill up all the numbers. Question at the last minute to provide support or services. For build that capability, so, I'm not saying everyone has everything written in stone and I do right now, but the more visibility we can get of, I'll just better plan it for that. If someone had something on Tuesday, we have an event on Saturday, plan ours. But, but we're not in charge of that fair.
No.
We're no.
No.
The fair, fair.
Um, so, okay, so, um, I will work at and will work on getting those other even there, um, and. Events that people are having, like if they're doing a walker or bike ride, they have to come to us for a permit, um, and we ha- we have denied permits. To really cool events because we're having our own event weekend for. Um, okay. I suggest one thing before we move on, that we approve this. But next week, but without the dates that are pending organizers on it, because what we're gonna do, once we all approve it. Is we're gonna publish it online and the landings all over the place, and if these organizers cancel their events or don't have them. Then the egg will wind up on our face because we publish them and they're not our events anyway, so let's just put Ben in here.
I agree with you.
Okay. Right. Um, anything else on that, guys, online? Okay. Um, we're gonna move on to the Trinity Church shared agreement. Um. So, well, okay. First, the Trinity Church, uh, brought it to their, uh, our sanctities, is that right?
I have no idea though.
Um.
I've gone to the church, but I'm not very involved.
And, well, and they provided, um, changes, but the other thing is that after they provided changes. I had to submit their changes, right, to our lawyer to look at it, but our lawyer is a different lawyer. Than who originally looked at this agreement and our current lawyer. And our current lawyer had concerns.
I saw a whole lot of concern.
Yes, and the other thing that our current lawyer said is, did you send this to your insurance company? And I said. I don't know, we weren't advised to, but I don't know. I called the insurance company and they said, we can't insure other people's property. Um, so some of the stuff in here is gonna have to be changed because it's like giving us sort of liability on other people's property.
I heard a few words on this whole thing, um, and I'm certainly not a lawyer or. So I'll just throw that out there, there's really just more questions that maybe I can keep it out. Um, first of all, why is the second sentence in here, it has nothing to do with. Also, they changed in downtown parking lot uh at. Like what five, isn't that the one next to the church?
Yes, um, so, so the whereas is are kind of establishing like why. Can't do this thing and why we would do this thing.
Okay.
So this whereas is actively here to say. We're making this agreement with this church because it's located right next to another parking lot, so other churches wouldn't say, hey, can we have one too? Well, they're down for re- two, because it's not down.
Um, and I think this is part of the what the lawyer said that. Auto renewal for up to.
How many lawyers?
Yeah, the lawyer. Uh, H two. And then I highlighted this. Episcopal Church terminates this agreement, Episcopal Church shall pay the town for any improvements, whatever, right? So, um, but when it comes to improvements maintaining, it's the owner's responsibility to maintain. Agrees to pay the parking premises in good conditions, also section E is missing at least a month, which is.
No, that's just a.
Yeah, we probably wanna fix that before we. So, um, but the property agrees to terminate or modify the existing contracts. I'm sorry, so the church is supposed to maintain, but then we talk about us. Um, improvements. And so what is? An improvement exactly?
You have to find that, you you exactly what the lawyer is saying.
Miss saying, but we talked about what the can be kind of the lighting, kind of like.
Yeah, what the lawyer is saying and what legit is saying is like, it's not our property. The only improvement we would be doing is to put a key out for meters and we're not gonna put meters there and we're not gonna put a key out.
Times possibilities, no more looking at Jesus. Very important resolutions. But then because it's not our property, the students have to agree to those ordinances, but they're also not residents, so how do we? Work around that, and this one's I just don't know, is there like a law or whatever, um. Okay, uh, pay goes along with something else that was community needs. Um, so the church may employ towing services. To be used for junk abandoned vehicles or vehicles park parking after the town's regular hours. So what if somebody comes during the town's regular hours, abandoned their car, now the town event is over, how do we conclude that that was? A ta- a car that was abandoned because of a town event or a car that was abandoned because of a church event? And then fees. Fees that the town can charge, collect, retain all revenues for regular daily or special event parking for the town, but then we also talk about a sixty forty split. Um, again, with the maintenance on section twelve. I think those were the big ones I thought, um.
Almost everything was hit by the lawyer.
I know.
So.
Um, but then, so the property owner who's to terminate, modify any existing contract that has to show companies. To have a contract for parking premises to prevent any conflict with public parking on the parking premises as provided for in this agreement and town. Enforcement never. I feel like that sentence is a little redundant considering that we go into K, the church may employ tow towing services to be. Abandoned vehicles or vehicles parking after the town hours. What is unreasonably withheld? The town, sorry, improvements, the town upon obtaining written agreement consent from Trinity Episcopal Church with consent show. Not be unreasonably withheld, may facilitate changes. So we're saying that the town can just go and make changes. That are not unreasonable, but what is unreasonable and not unreasonable according to us in the church?
Well, if we don't own the day of a parking lot, we shouldn't be doing all this.
So then why is it in there?
The last something they'll ask, what?
They need to do their own. Um, so I had like, I wrote randomly thoughts down, like who is ultimately maintaining the parking lot? This counter return, and if we're not doing any maintenance, I think we should be very clear on that. Because right now it's kind of making it seem like we might do maintenance or regiment. We, but we're also not like responsible for it, but we'll do it.
But we also sound reasonable.
It's like.
It's just, it's, we also can't be making of.
Right, exactly, it's just, it just seems like. Um, there's too much like, we'll do this, but not that, but like, we can't do this, but not this, and like. It's not clear to me.
Yeah. I, I think, yeah, I think you. Well, we kind of, we, we had the advice from the lawyer, we weren't able to synthesize with the way you were, so thank you for doing. And the lawyer also has synthesized a lot of the.
Sure, yeah, and I was feeling used to something. At any time, for any reason, but giving the party thirty day advance for a notice. But then it says, um, if the town terminates disagreement, the town orbits the crust of any improvements, but we're kind of not making improvements on this property because it's not. So, but then it also says, if Trinity Episcopal Church terminates this agreement, Trinity Church will pay the. Um, but we're literally, the sentence above says either party may terminate this agreement at any time for any reason. As long as there's thirty day notice. Are we saying that they can terminate within thirty day notice and still have to pay the money back? For improvements that the town is not allowed to make or right?
Right, cuz we're not gonna make any improvements, the last change, the whole thing.
Yeah, and a lot of this sounds like, um, what the attorney didn't call, kind of talk with him a bit.
So it sounds like, you know, what she asked in the. You think this thing.
Yeah, I wanted to clarify that so that you guys. So, I think we're still working on this, so I did ask John to take it off the agenda for next time, um. And so what we wanna do is, I'm thinking based on the feedback that we want to have. The attorney draft changes into it. And then send it back to Trinity.
I think it just seems to be like. A lot less of like, we'll do this, but not this, but we'll do that and not that, but. Like, we're never gonna fix this, it just, it's. We are not maintaining or fixing your parking lot, we are literally just doing a sixty forty split.
Right.
For addition of parking spaces.
Right.
Mm-hmm, and then like the part where it says like.
Yeah, that's. You think, yes. Okay. Yeah, thank you. We're sorry, we do appreciate. I think probably, you know.
First, uh, yeah.
Um, and I'm sure that I asked questions of our lawyer, but I don't know, anyway, um, moving on. So we're gonna move on to property standard, um, and. Um, I'm gonna actually ask Sean who synthesized his conversation with the new lawyer on this and what the plan is for this, there's not actually anything in the pack.
Oh, okay.
Um, and and for Cozen, are you okay with kind of explaining the process moving forward based on the attorney's concerns and review?
So the plan is, is that um Attorney Ruff and I spoke regarding the codification project as well as the property standards ordinance that has been proposed. Going forward, of course, we're taking the two residential and commercial, combining them as well and putting one together for the town. Uh, the recommendation has been made with Attorney Ruff that we. Um, go ahead, she thinks by February she could have the, she'll flush out the current ordinance as it is. Put in the changes that need to be made, present it to you all uh in February. And hopefully by, we're looking at end of April, beginning May, where that could be approved. And then, of course, at that point, the codification project would then proceed. Because thinking that the bulk of our codification, of course, is property standards. And we don't want to have the codification as soon as it gets produced to be obsolete. So the plan will be, we, I'm working with Munacode, they seem to be very on board with the, with the timeline. So that's sort of where we're at right now with, with um, moving forward with the property standards.
So to summarize, you know, we had the issues. That we were concerned about, we had the back and forth with the former lawyer that I think everyone, I sent that information. Onto you all, and now, um. The lawyer is recommending, the current lawyer is recommending some changes to the way it was structured. Um. And we'll also chime in that our economic development firm um was recommending some changes to the commercial property standards, so I asked them to talk to the lawyer. About the recommendations, so those will go in.
Sarah, I know that we're, this is a great effort to come up with new ordinances and proposals for the property standards, but what are we gonna do about? Like, holding people accountable, because if the county isn't, like if they're not participating with us.
So, right, so this is actually the kind of the, right, so we need to up, we need to kind of get you guys up to where. Basically, what we had agreed is that we wanted to adopt the county's um ordinances, right, so that it's standard. And so that it's easy for us if we're struggling with some. So that we can call the county and say, can you help us with this? Because the way home works is like the county's not really supposed to come in. And enforce, you know, they let us enforce the rules because of the town, so it's not that the county isn't coming in and enforcing property standards, it's that responsibility because we have. And if we need help, we need to reach out to them.
Okay.
For them to do that, um, and so the last place we were at was. The lawyer said that that couldn't be done in the ordinance now. Being told that it can be done in the ordinance, um, and they're, you know, they're doing that, so. It's really just a jurisdiction issue is that we have that first enforcement, um, as, and I'm not sure if. We've announced this to the public, but our code compliance officer um has, is is no longer with us, um. And we were sorry to see her go, um. But we are looking for a new code compliance officer, uh, we have had a walking candidate who has a lot of experience, um, but the posting is still up, though, it will be up for thirty days. Uh, and then Chief will conduct interviews and look into that, but having someone who really can. With the level of experience that at least this one person has, I think will help improve. Um, our citations.
Going back to the ordinance within the county, uh, from my understanding, a county has been a big part of the. Problem with like, uh, the abandoned. Yeah, and not maintaining those and also not following our ordinances, so.
How do we hold them accountable?
Right, that's where I'm getting at, is how, how are we holding the county accountable for the lack of their maintenance? On the items that they should be maintaining, like that abandoned school building is deplorable. And it needs to get fixed ASAP, so if we're working on these ordinancees, sorry, that's me. You know, like.
Right, so the, the school building is this, like. Yes, but there's like all this complicated issue that makes that. Yeah, let. Yes, um, my understanding, by the way, was the house, the little house that's falling in blood was supposed to be taken down before December thirty first, so. That's a follow up call I need to make to say, why is this up? Um, with regard to the school building, it's a little more complicated, right, because we do wanna know if it's salvageable.
I'm just, right.
Um. So we, we know, we know the building's not salvageable, so. There's not a way for us to like cite the county for properties, and you know, they're, they're making sure it's mode and all of that other stuff. So it's really just a conversation, I think, on that specific building that we're, you know, all gonna need to be.
Where are you guys? He players here for the. Ceremony, the swearing in ceremony.
So, yeah, so we'll wanna have that conversation with um Vice Chair Harrison. Um, is that the guy on the right here? Um, he's our county council person, and, um, and. So the, is anyone else here who, I don't think anyone else was here who was in.
No, from the county.
Um, so the other folks we're talking to are the central services folks, the economic development folks. Like, I've just been trying to get the county to understand the potential of that site because it's, it's essentially waterfront property. Um, and so there seems to be an appetite for, yes, we can put out an RFQ or RFI or whatever they're called. To see if folks are interested in redeveloping the site and the town and the county can work together. On that, it's just. Yes, and I think Commissioner Brooks's assistance. In bringing this all home will actually help push us over this. So. And Green will can help with this, but also we have to, so either two of. You know, two of you go or it has to be open, but we'll go.
I think two, two of the newer folks that have zero experience go and, and just tell him like. This is embarrassing, what, what are you doing about this already?
So we're gonna have. Um, but, um. So, so anyway, we need to start talking, we, we need to start talking about, um. We need to start talking about it with the county, and I mean, you have a lot of people over that you can talk to, we also need to talk over with central services. About the plan, um, and I have people that I can talk to as well, um. Office of Central Services and I, I have the contacts over there, so you know, the. Although that's the one that. This.
And then they park in all things for people to walk around in.
So much can be done there, like, it doesn't have to be, you know, uh, it could be recreational, it could be like a winery and parents go and sit down next.
So, sorry, I'm just, because we're getting the, the agenda topic, call us back to say that. So that's probably a goal, right? Um, like one of our priority goals for the year, um. Right, um, and so when we have our goal setting meeting, maybe I can talk more about what I've been doing and who I've been talking to and whatnot, but.
Yeah, we're supposed to stick to the agenda.
And I'm supposed to make sure we do, so, um. So I think everyone understands what we're doing with front standard, yeah.
Yeah.
What is this doing now to the codification?
So it's. The ordinance is current, currently written as if the codification happened, but actually it needs to be written as if. But actually, it needs to be written as if before the codification happens. So that's piece one. Am I doing okay here, John? So so the new revised version of the ordinance is going to be provided to us by February. So we can review it and hopefully approve it. And it's an ordinance, so it's gonna sit, you know, it's gonna be introduced and then approved. So we should be able to approve it in March, which will get the codification by June. Is that right?
We're talking May or June is what we're looking.
Essentially, we're still, sorry, I got you on it. But essentially, we're still waiting on the approval of property standards to kick off codification.
That's correct.
So I'll ask the question that I ask every meeting when, when, when this comes up. What does this do to cost in relation to our contract for codifications? Now we're in this thing now by seven, eight months.
They fully understand where we're at because they understand that the issue is, as soon as we produce this document, we would have to pay for a supplement. So they're willing to hold at this point because they know that as soon as we release this, the codification gets produced, it'll be an obsolete document if we do not update the property standards. They fully understand what we're doing. We kind of part for the horse. What we should have done, flushed it through.
There'd be.
Property standards approved and then started the codification project. Having known, now that we want to do the cut, the property standards, it's essential that we go ahead and get that done ahead of time before we actually proceed with the property standards. Otherwise, the town's gonna have to pay for another document, a supplement, that we don't need because the document will hopefully be updated when it first comes out.
Thank you. So we're gonna move on to preliminary charter review changes. And I think, um, because we want to keep the meeting a reasonable length and we're getting close to two hours, we're going to just um, basically, these are, and, and clerk puts it, I'm gonna let you summarize if you want, but these are the recommendations for us to consider. And we should probably schedule, we'll get to the end to schedule what time it's to discuss it more in depth. Uh, because I have a couple things on administrative that I want to go over to.
Yeah. A real quick review of the charter review, uh, board meetings. Uh, we met, um, I want to say four times, um, and we went over various items within the charter. Uh, some of the key areas that they're looking at, um, you know, looking at within the charter is the town elections. Uh, the border, where the border commissioners would have more power, uh, the budget process, and of course, there's other items as well. So for instance, in town elections, who is ultimately responsible for all aspects of elections? They need to specify that in the town charter. Um, eighty-two dash three, do staggered elections, maybe the full board replaced, um, replacement every two years or three-two every year. The president is voted on election terms, even odd years. Uh, term limits for the president, possibly, uh, two terms of two years. Uh, where the board of commissioners would have more power, the commissioners should oversee um, enclaves within the town, such as the commissioner would be responsible for pub, police, public works, general government, and town committees. Um, establishing a recall provision, need to look at the verbiage for a recall provision within, uh, the charter. Uh, town budget, uh, eighty-two dash forty-three cannot move or remove money after the budget is approved. A monthly spending requires two months minimum to be retained in the bank. Uh, so these are some of the items that they've come up with. There's some other, you know, small items that need to be looked at, verbiage and things of that sort. Uh, one of the key components also is to define shall, may, will, or must in the town charter. Um, that's something in, important as well as, you know, unenforceable statements should be removed or clarified to make enforceable. So these are the key components that the charter review sort of proposed. And of course, you know, it's gonna require, uh, possibly, you know, more conversation as well as meetings and things of that sort. But this is what they've come up with.
What I just want to say in here is charter modifications are a really big step lift. Budget is a really big stack lift. So when we go ahead and pick a timeline, we don't think we should do the charter modifications during budget season to allow staff to have one big project and do it well, rather than splitting between two really big projects. But that is gonna be my two cents on it. Um, and that's gonna be for us too, especially the newer commissioners, even though I know you guys won't.
I feel like I need to review my notes and I'm obviously a detailed note taker. Because I feel like stuff are, are missing. Just, I remember having discussions about like, unless, I don't know. I, I feel like we had discussions and, um. Yeah.
Question, are we able to weigh in on this charter review?
So this is just the committee's advice. Oh, we're gonna be the ones making the decision based on the advice. Yeah. Yeah, sorry.
No, I mean, I mean, I should say, can we add to it? Like, what we think should.
Oh, yeah, it's gonna be kind of what, this is like as if staff wrote us a memo with their advice that we're gonna make. That's what we were elected to do, right? We were elected to make decisions. Um, so, sorry. Not trying to give anyone a headache over there.
What data would be the charter recommendations? Some of the things that we've seen here to get a place where we should vote on.
I mean, some of this outside, like, how standard operation procedures of government go, so these recommendations wouldn't make sense. Some.
To your point, you sound like you're writing them down.
I am requesting that we have this after the budget is passed in May to accommodate staffs. Exactly one large project at a time.
Give us Karen, you and I, time as well to look at basically to our what we, what recommendations they can come together and.
If everyone comfortable with waiting until after budget season to.
Yeah.
Yes. Yes.
Okay. So that will be the plan that'll go, um, probably we can start looking at it in the same meeting as off the budget. Does that work, John?
Yes, that's perfect. That's wonderful.
And it'll just be a discussion at that point. You won't have to provide any. All right. So we're gonna move on to administrative updates. Um we have two things on the slide, and I actually have a note in my agenda that I'd forgotten about from last week. So I'm gonna start with a note in my agenda, which is to kind of give you guys an update on the situation with regard to evictions. Um, prior to October, I don't think we'd had any evictions. Um, and when there's an eviction, there is suddenly a lot of, you know, household items being put in front of the neighbors are concerned. Um, the last eviction, we had some folks kind of hanging around, which is making, you know, neighbors uncomfortable. So call the sheriff's department and I said, look, can you tell us when, when you're having an eviction? And they said, we really can't because of the nature of evictions, but we can try to let you know when we're actually there. Um, and I just explained our concerns and the residents' concerns. Um, you know, there were a lot of concern residents, both in Marlboro Town and Spring Branch. Um, with each eviction. So hopefully, having that communicate, hopefully that communication will help so that our officers can be around once we know the eviction is going on. They just can't tell us at that time. So just wanted to provide you guys that.
Why do you, why do you wanna, why do you want officers, bro?
So in Spring Branch, there was a gentleman kind of hovering around.
Oh, trying to take the stuff.
Trying to take this stuff, but then he was kind of wandering. I had residents who were concerned about that. So, so that's why we wanted that. And then the other part is like why these evictions are happening, right? Which is that we have rental property. People are buying houses and then renting them. The house in Spring Branch was being rented for like twenty-six hundred a month. Um, so I think that one of the things we're gonna need to tackle this year or early next year is rental property, like having rental licenses, having regulations and standards so that we can be more on top of, you know, like, maybe we ha- do we have the right to say in the case of an eviction, you have forty-eight hours to remove all items? Or do you know what I'm saying? So the property owner has some kind of, um regulations that we have control over. So that, that's my update and my recommendation for us to think about. Any questions on that? Um, the next piece is the four fifty-seven retirement plan. Um, Commissioner Culver and Commissioner Lot, you may remember that we had one with Insurity. And what it is, is it's basically a retirement plan for our employees who are not eligible for the Maryland state retirement. And there would be, um Chief Burse, if you can chime in if I don't get this right. So it's primarily a problem with police officers. If they worked for the state of Maryland and have retired from the state of Maryland, then I, they can't pay into a retirement plan with the state of Maryland. Um, and this causes a recruiting problem.
So, okay, so if you worked for Maryland as a police officer and you retired, so once you retire, you're saying you can't start a plant, or you can, you have to do while you were still working?
Right. All right, Chief, can you try and explain? Because I don't think I did a good job.
So if you're a state employee, and it doesn't even have to be a police officer, so if we hire a state employee and they're getting money from the Maryland state retirement system, if they came to work for the town of Upper Marlboro, they can't pay into the state retirement system that we currently have because they're getting a retirement from the Maryland state retirement system. Sorry.
Right.
No, I said that would make sense because it would seem like they're double dipping.
Well, well, yes and no. Uh, because they're receiving money, but then you can't turn around and put in money to receive money again, is, is the issue. So the four fifty-seven, um, retirement plan is just another avenue and it it's a tool for recruiting any staff person because the state retirement system um, is kind of one-stop shop setup, whereas a four fifty-seven gives you different options to diversify your money. And gives you a little bit more opportunity to have two retirement plans versus just one. Uh, so that's another reason why the state retirement is, you know, kind of problematic when you're talking about recruiting anybody because it's just one standard plan. Whereas a four fifty-seven gives you multiple plans within that whole plan.
So it's good for recruiting over across the board, but I, the reason I focus on police is it's super hard to recruit police right now. And that has actually been a barrier of not having it. Um, so I think it's important. I sent the spreadsheet, but it's, I think it, we just looked at it today. It was like about four thousand dollars a year. Was that, does that sound right, Chief?
Yes, I think it was four thousand, forty-five hundred, one of the T.
Yeah, not per employee, just that's the total.
That's the total.
Um, and there's a spreadsheet that I, I sent to you guys individually and, um, will be in the packet for next week. Um, yeah, because I just sent it today. I asked her about it, you know, so because we just met with Michelle today. So the reason I'm bringing this to you guys is we just met with Michelle today to go over options that they had and their recommendation and ask the questions that we had. Um, and what she said is it's gonna take thirty or sixty to ninety days from when I sign the agreement to when the plan is active. So if we can add this to next time's agenda with the information, so you have the stuff I sent to you this afternoon, and then John's gonna put that into the packet. Um, and it has three different quotes. Um, and the recommendation from the HR firm. Uh, and I'm just requesting that we do it now so we don't add another thirty days to the period.
So this is just with our.
If, if anyone retired from the state of Maryland. Right. Well, at, newbies could go into the plan, but that one costs us more.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
It's just that right now, we, we actually have employees who retired from the state of Maryland, who would like to be contributing to the retirement plan. Um, and so we'd like to provide them an avenue for that. And we also have had people get partway through the process to be hired and then back out of the process because we don't have this option.
Right, but if we don't have, if we say we don't really have any money, then how do we fork over another forty-five hundred dollars?
I mean, I think if we want employees to do the work that we, and I think that becomes, and that's gonna be the budget.
If there are limits on the amount of people that can join that, it's worth, it's open to anybody.
The cost goes up a little bit, like if you get more than twenty-five employees. Right now, we are, right. So it's not, that's not a fact, um, for us. And yes, anyone can join, anyone and everyone can join. Um. It's like a 401K, but you can't form a government.
You can't have.
Yeah, we can't, we can't have 401Ks. It's, it's, it's basically a 401K, it has different numbers. I don't know why. The HR firm understands why. But it's functionally the same. Um, and, and yeah, that's a discussion we're in, budget season is, you know, in order to keep providing services, we have, you know, we have to retain employees and that costs money and we're gonna have to make choices. But we'll get to that with budget.
The boss would say, did we, that, um. So did we salary or something like that? So shouldn't that be help to us?
So our salaries are at or below average for, um, municipal employees. So we increase them, sure, but that, they can go elsewhere and make money. So that's.
So what do, what are other towns doing for this issue?
Um, I don't know. Oh, Chief, do you know what other towns, they, I mean, they have to have a four fifty-seven, right? Because that's the only other option. Yes or no?
Yes, um, other municipalities have more than just the Maryland state retirement. They offer some type of a four fifty-seven. Some of the little bit larger municipalities also have a program that's called Leops, which is another type of retirement plan. So some agencies have two, some have three. Um, and to kind of answer your question as far as recruiting, what a lot of police departments around the country, let alone the municipalities, is they're offering signing bonuses and retention bonuses. Something that we do not and cannot do at this current time. And they're starting at five thousand dollars to, if someone wants, if I wanted to recruit somebody, I have to put out and say, hey, I'm willing to pay you five thousand dollar signing bonus to just come to the town. So that is something that, you know, you may have seen it on the news where Montgomery County, Prince George's County, they're doing fifteen, twenty, twenty-five thousand. There are agencies that are doing forty, fifty thousand dollars because a lot of people just don't want to be in law enforcement anymore. And so they're using these signing bonuses to try to recruit people. And basically what you're doing is stealing somebody from somebody else's agency. And then if you offer something more attractive, they'll leave your agency and go to another agency. So, um, you can Google any police agency in this area and you'll, nine times out of ten, see that they have four fifty-seven signing bonuses. Four fifty-seven signing bonuses, um, all kinds of benefits, you know, training. Um, reimbursement, college tuition reimbursement. A lot of stuff we just can't do, but that's why our recruiting is so difficult at this present moment.
What I was gonna say is for the four fifty-seven and what is available. Can we just go and use the four fifty-seven for all of the resources? Or is only the folks that are retired allowed to use the four fifty-seven?
No, the four fifty-seven is for everybody, so if.
Well, I think what Alma is saying is, and I've asked this question before, which is can we get rid of Maryland State Retirement and only use the four fifty-seven?
I don't, I don't think so, because I think I'd asked that question when I first got there, but I think the Maryland State requirement, the Maryland State. I don't want to say, I almost want to say it's a requirement. But, uh, um, somebody would have to look into it because I asked about that early on because I knew that that was a challenge, so. Just giving you an example, let's just say we recruited somebody from. Prince George's County, Montgomery County, DC, if they're already involved in a four fifty-seven plan. When they retire, they could transfer their current balance to this four fifty-seven and keep contributing. Which means their balance would continue to grow, if not the previous four fifty-seven plan would stop. Unless they reinvested it somewhere else. So if I brought over several hundred thousand dollars in a retirement plan to the town, I could continue contributing and let it grow. Is is part of the reason why a lot of government agencies have a four fifty-seven because you can transfer. From one department to the next, so that's sort of like how the state retirement system is. Because you retire from there, they won't let you add to it. Because that's the state's system, but a four fifty-seven is a lot more flexible. In investing, sort of like an IRA, so if you opened up an IRA with one, one vendor, you could open up another IRA with another vendor. But the state is kind of having you locked in.
So from my recollection, because I've asked the question. Um, I think I had the question of Will and then also Kyle is. My understanding from was like partly we can't and partly. We don't want to. And that second part is tied to recruiting. Because Maryland State Retirement is a good retirement plan. And it actually helps recruit people. So what I think we should do, because you're asking the same question I asked. Chiefs at the, and we all can't remember the exact answer. Is that in order for us to remember the answer is, why don't I send an email to the HR company and ask them this question? Both can and should we, right? Sometimes when you can do something you shouldn't. Um, and get her advice back and then forward that information. Uh, and now I am going to actually turn this over to clerk Hudson, um, because we were. We were talking about the website the other day, um. And I was being asked questions about the website, and so he's gonna give you a preview of what it's gonna look like and answer some of the questions. That were asked, um, of me. And you guys can ask. Oh, well, so we're gonna have a two-minute reset. I'm gonna actually mute this during our two minutes. Okay, so we're back, uh, and we're going to, um. Black clerk Hudson take us through this, um, as long as feedback, because I haven't quite made too many.
Very good.
Oh, I turned the heat down because it's too hot in my office, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm excited to present to you all, um, the work of several weeks, President Franklin, Darnell Bond and myself. Have been working on revising the town's website. So what you see in front of you is the actual homepage. Starting at the top with the photo of the Crane Monument, that'll be the, uh, starting at the top. You'll have the larger logo that will then, as you scroll down, the logo gets smaller in the top left corner. Um, we've kind of made things a little more streamlined on the homepage where you'll be able to find, uh, meeting information sort of at the top. So that people can get involved. Of course, we, um, talked about doing signup for alerts, so this time we'll actually be able to do text alerts off of the website. Which is an exciting feature that we definitely want to, you know, be promoting among the residents. Uh, we have popular services, of course, we'll have parking tickets and things of that sort where people can easily access. Certain areas so that they can, um, locate the items that they need. We also have, again, the the feature where we have the latest news items on the homepage, just like our current website. Um, and then, of course, towards the bottom, we have the calendars, and of course, with the calendars. We plan to have the meeting calendar, we'll have a calendar for the, of course, the committees. As well as, you know, we'll calendar everything, hopefully that make it a little more streamlined. That was one of the issues that we had was that the current calendar that we had was not very functional. So now we'll have it in calendar form as well as we'll do the upcoming events sort of. Spelled out to make it a little more easier for people to have access to them. But of course, now the website will reflect the current branding, um, for the town, using the colors that are within the logo. So it's exciting to see the changes that are being made. And of course, we will have the alerts like we currently have where we can add alerts. So if we have, um, such as yesterday with the, um. Dr. Martin Luther King Holiday with the change in trash schedule or with the, with trash schedules and things of that sort. We then can use those alerts and make sure people can, when they go into the website, they'll be able to see those items very easily.
So we actually, sorry, John, um, we actually talked about this, John and I, because it pops up, like, but what's happening? And and I'm sure that it's not just you guys that are doing it. People are seeing a pop-up and they're clicking it off without reading it. That's where the information is. So, um, John and I were talking today about this picture that is the Crane Highway Monument. He's gonna have the ability to change this picture. So we talked about was creating banners for each holiday. So when the holiday is, it will change this landing picture. And that way, it's the first thing you see.
Say what's going on for that holiday.
Right, which is what that little alert box that everyone's closing is saying. John puts a lot of work into that.
I do, I put a lot of work in that.
The, the thing with the pop-up on the site as it is now, because they're generally, or at least the. Well, data of it is for you to sign up for. Confirmation, anything like that. So I'm not, I do know that. More immediate information is there, default when I go in there is because. Signing up for anything, I'm just clicking on that. So that one, it's just for me, it's just for me. It's easy for me to miss that type of information, particularly if I'm looking on my phone, so that would be another thing I'm interested in. Mobile device. If I know that there's this specific thing that I get to, I'm gonna click on that. View page and see the, the information and that, that, that one. Appreciate the work that goes in getting it done. It may not be doing what we say.
Right, well, but this is helpful because we're in our little silo doing what we think makes sense to communicate. But. The current website, this is, you can see this is way more user-friendly than the current. So this was actually. Gave them like sample websites we liked and the ones I sent them were ones that. Really well on your mobile device. Um, I don't know if we've been, we've seen a mobile device preview.
No, that's when we do the next phase, that's when we. Next phase, we, once they do the site map and that, that's when we actually can see it on the various devices. This is just basically showing us the design. And now they're basically integrating it and making it an actual website, so that's where they're at next. So then next phase is we get the site map and we're able to go ahead and actually. Eventually, in a few weeks, I think it's like three weeks, we'll be converting all the items that are currently on the current website. Moving it over to this website, which will be, that's gonna be the best part. No, it won't, and we'll flush it out. Yep, and then once we flush it out and we make sure everything's working the way we want it, then we'll roll it out to the general public and as well as you guys.
So when we get the test website, or we could send it to the commissioner and get their feedback. Because I think, like, what's happening is at this point, I've migrated over to the staff. Mentality in using the webpage. And so my feedback isn't. Helpful because I'm using the webpage as much as the staff is, so I know my way around it. What you guys are using the webpage in the way that the residents would use the webpage, so your feedback. Is helpful for how to find things, so I think that that. Will be a helpful process, and this is an administrative item, this is not like a policy or resolution, so we can deal with this. With all of us and it's not an issue. So we'll loop you in when it's live and like you can actually functionally through it. Is that good? John, did you have anything else to add?
No, that's, that's it.
Right, um, so we, I do want to give the public, um. If you'd like to make a comment, we'll give you two minutes to provide a comment to us.
I have a hand raised from Joe Corkley. Hang on one second, let me go ahead and ask him to unmute.
I'll get my timer ready and, um.
Joe, are you there?
Yes, I'm there.
Go ahead.
So on the website redesign, um. I know the old one is very questionable. But people may have bookmarked individual pages, and so it would be, would be good if you can do some sort of redirection. That if they go to one of the old pages, if it has an equivalent on the new site. To be sent to that new page, I know it's more work, but, you know, it's. It's best practices for web design, so.
Yep, I'll talk, revise about.
What's up?
So are we just giving comments on this portion or the whole meeting so far?
Anything you would like to comment on?
Okay, then also, um, the, these, there was the resolution setting the fee for. For events in the town and setting a rain date. And I think you really need to consider events as unique items and that each. Or each group organizing an event should have some flexibility because when you're trying to start up a new event. You can't justify a hundred and twenty-five dollar fee for vendors. You know, and so. Once you're well-established, maybe that's a legitimate fee, but you need some, some flexibility based on. What the draw of the event is and what type of vendors you're looking for. Um, to, to set that, so. I would recommend that you undo that resolution. And I think that one was also the one that set a rain date for everything, so thank you.
Um, I do want to just say, government's aware of this, that we, I am trying to streamline content. So there are a lot of pages that are gonna disappear and be consolidated into other pages. Um, we, we don't, um, engage in conversation with them, um. So, well, let me think of, we gotta think about that, that's a meeting procedures.
I have another hand raised from Patty Callicott.
Hi, good evening, long meeting. Uh, just wanted to let you know, I think memories and morsels, um, is gonna be moving into July. So you may be wanting to look at your event schedule again. Um, changing the town meetings, you guys had a long discussion about the meetings. Um, once you post the meetings. Um, if you can send out an alert as opposed to making people go to the town webpage to see. If something that was scheduled is now no longer scheduled, that would probably be better, and you might want to look into sending out text messages. As a part of a constant contact. Um, I'm, I'm going through these really quick because two minutes after two and a half hours is a lot. Um, I, I wanted to know if there's, uh, what's, why there wasn't any discussion on a budgeted gen, uh, bu- budget adjustment. Ordinance. Um, and also, uh. Not, no discussion on the town administrator or the fact that the historical committee only has one member now. Also for, you guys talked about the school. And, uh, four years ago, Central literally said they had no funding to maintain that school. And I'm assuming because there's no pushback about it, um, that they're not gonna put any funding on it. Um, for property evictions, there's state and county regulations already, and I don't know how the. Town can put regulations on evictions, uh, based on town and county, and I, I. Only heard part of that conversation, uh, for retirement. Um, that, that I heard of at the conversation there, um. That retirement that you're talking about should be part of their current salary range and not make an adjustment for that. Um, we're only one mile right now. Um, anybody that's looking to retire is looking for an easier job and good pay. With a, a nice retirement pay as a supplement is better, you're talking about county and state. That, that's a whole different ballgame, in, in, including.
All right, thank you.
Proactive alerts. Yeah, two minutes, thanks.
Okay, yeah, we, we will be having a meeting next week, um, and there will be time to comment, um, on things. I am just going to provide clarity on a few things, um, we are not looking at providing regula- regulations on evictions only on rentals. This meeting change was sent out in a, um. Alert through the VIR program, um, and text messages are coming as clerk Hudson mentioned, um. There will be a budget adjustment and we are discussing that with our accountant. All right, um, anyone, no other hands?
I don't have any more.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
No, we have.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Oh, you're right, John, we gotta approve the next meeting to John. Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Oh, you're right, John. We gotta approve the next meeting to John. Okay. So next week, just cut to the, cut to the chase with the business.
Will do. Have old business, A, Resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero one, Budget Calendar Board Vote. B, Annual Events Calendar Board Vote. C, Town of Meeting Schedule Board Vote. D, Town Holiday Schedule Board Vote. New business, A, Resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero three, four fifty seven retirement plan Board Vote.
Um, and then he's got the rolling agenda items over here. Um, if we wanted to move anything on to there, but since we only have a week, um, let's figure this out and we'll, we'll pick which items are going in better at the next meeting, unless anyone wants to discuss anything. So, um, for those who have not heard yet, um, our former town clerk, David Williams passed away last week. Um, he was town clerk for us for a long time. And then we will be having a celebration of life at the, in the town of Berwyn Heights. Um, because he was with us, we wanna make sure you know, um, our former town administrator Kyle Snyder uh, is working with us on this event. So, um, if you can come by, please do. Um, so we have our volunteer training, and then if you're a volunteer, you're gonna wanna sign up for the appreciation luncheon if you volunteered over the year. If you wanna be a new volunteer, please sign up for volunteer training. And it's someone's birthday.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Commissioner Provod. Happy birthday to you.
Now, now, look at Twitter. Col, Colbert won this, don't move. Who gets the second? I, hold on, John's gonna call me.
Commissioner Brooks. Commissioner Colbert. Commissioner Lot. Commissioner Provod. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. John, do you need anything before I log off?
No, I think we're good. I think we're, we're all set.
All right.